Good morning. We'll call this meeting of the Sierra County Commission on Tuesday, July 21st to order due to the National State and County COVID-19 declared emergency and public health order dated March 23rd, 2020, as well as subsequent executive orders limiting public gatherings in the state, this meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public will be able to attend and listen to the meeting via Facebook Live at the following: Facebook@SCEmergencyServices, Facebook@SierraCountySentinel.KCHSRadio, YouTube.com/KCHSRadio, Twitter @KCHSRadio, Dish Network Channel 371, and local radio KCHS 101.9 FM. Public comment can be mailed to s2@sierracode.org or mailed to 855-VANPATTON, TDC Mexico 87901, no later than Monday, July 20th, 2020 by 4:00 p.m. Ms. Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Paxton?
Here.
Commissioner Day?
Here.
Commissioner Luna?
Here.
And we also have Shelley Trujillo-Clerk, Dave Pato with Nancy Pato in staff, and Bruce Swindler, our county manager. Francis, would you lead us into place this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge the flag of the city of Mexico, the symbol of a perfect friendship among united borders.
We have Ray Pierce here with USDA Wildlife Services, he's going to speak later. I just want to take this moment to send the commission's condolences to our county assessor Mike Houston and his wife Susan on the loss of their daughter. That's a sad thing and something to deal with, our hearts go out to them. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moved to approve the agendas presented.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Likewise, is there a motion to approve last meeting's minutes?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Day moved to approve the minutes from special meeting and the regular meeting.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have one public comment from Deborah and Nicole, commissioners. I'm writing regarding ordinance 20-002, the direct deposit ordinance. This is an ordinance involving county personnel and others receiving payments from the county. As such, it seems inappropriate to discuss opt-out requests in the public forum of the county commission. People who might have a need to opt out may have very personal reasons for doing so. I would like to kindly request that the commission move such requests to the executive portion of the meeting or to another private venue. Thank you, Deb, Nicole, Hillsborough. No more public comment?
Mr. Chair, yes, I'm just looking at an email that was sent Friday, I'd like to read it from there.
Please, go ahead.
So commissioners, we would like to personally thank you so much for your interest in this completely devastating and corrupt program. I would highly recommend, or at this point beg, for you to include the demand for us to have access to the GPS website as well as having all, having access to all radio frequencies of all wolves. As we sit here finishing our dinner, we've been trying to get the labo pack, the pack has been located less than two miles from our house on the telemetry and have been unsuccessful for two days. So I hope on the website, you see about GPS points, the most recent readings are from July 5th, here's a link so you can look at it, they included the link. We just ran into need to know where these wolves are. There's absolutely no reason we should have not, should not have access to that site or information. Please include that demand. Again, I thank you so much, and if you have any questions or comments, please contact us, ask John and Megan to present the slash right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I moved to approve consent agenda items, A through B is presented.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Presentations. Mr. Pierce, it's glad to have you with us, if you'll just step to the podium, please give us an update. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for the invite, it's nice having you, kind of normal again, even though we probably short-lived, I guess, but I've been sending kind of updates, I'm sure I've heard back from most of you on that, on stuff that we've been doing. But to jump right off into the wolf stuff, I've actually been on the slash quite a bit. They have, I'm not the lead investigator on the slash, because they have their own, that's coming out of the Catherine County stuff, but I've been helping with that, because those same wolves are crossing back and forth quite a bit, so I've been trying to keep an eye on that, especially the alpha female that's on that, that site seems to like to come over, you know, onto the Sierra County site quite a bit. They've been doing, there's some big changes that are happening on the wolf program, I'll try to keep you up to date on that. They hired a range rider, which is a non-lethal position, which is kind of up in there right now, and then of course, the county guys that are doing investigations themselves. We're kind of under the same restrictions as the landowner on the, I mean, I get an update every two weeks on GPS locations, so we're trying to fix that, and to work and ask for more real time on that type of information, so we are working on that, and I'll try to stay in touch with you all on that, and with Megan and Sean on that too, as long as, it's the same as all these other cooperators who are dealing with that. On the Sierra County side, it's been fairly calm, we've had some stuff over at, you know, Turkey Creek with their stuff, as usual, that same female, it's kind of going back and forth, and then of course, the non-collars, but most of the pressure is over on the Catherine County side at the moment, and it's, it's not good, as you're aware. As far as our coyote work, it's a little bit higher than normal this time of year, I'm not sure what's, what's kind of causing that, if it's, you know, drought-related, or, you know, especially down south, as you get closer to the hatch, it's been, I've been really busy down there. It's been easy to control as far as, because we don't have no wolf restrictions and that kind of stuff, so we're running 44s and that kind of stuff, and it's, it's easy to control, but it hasn't been, we've had a lot more activity than normal down there. And then, of course, summertime, I've been doing quite a bit of crop stuff, it's not my favorite, but, I mean, it's important, so, you know, with some of the vineyard stuff in Ingle and watermelon projects, a lot of that's bird-related, but also, you know, you get into your coyotes and that kind of stuff. Which if I was a coyote in the desert, there was a thousand acres of watermelons, I would be all over that, guaranteed, so. And then, of course, we're just starting some of our urban stuff again, which is, that's normal this time of year, we got coyote pups on the ground, I'm always teaching them to hunt cats and small dogs, it's always kind of an easy target for them, so, most of that's educational, just so that people were, are aware of, you know, where their walking dogs, especially small dogs, where their walking dogs and that kind of stuff, and territorial issues, and then if maybe, then we'll go in and go ahead and remove that particular, you know, aggressive animal and stuff, so. Right now, the only, the one I'm primarily working on that's on Elfin Dugoff Horse, which we had it last year, it's the same den, it's just easy targets for those coyotes, their urban coyotes are, that's just what they do, so, and there's quite a bit of space over there for them to, to kind of work around and hide in, that kind of stuff, so. Of course, that fire, that kind of, that kind of actually helped me a little bit, but, I mean, other than that, are there any questions on stuff we're doing, or?
I have one. Ray, are you, are you still fully authorized to do depredation confirmation investigations?
Absolutely, absolutely, so even with this, the new range rider, he's kind of, if he's not assigned to Tifer County, he's actually going everywhere on investigations. Right now, there's not an investigation on the Sierra County side that I'm not involved in, and I will be the lead man on that, so, that's pretty important to me, I need to know what's going on with my cooperators, and just because a wolf, you know, it's called in as wolf investigation, a lot of times there's other issues, you know, coyote, bear, lion, so absolutely, I will be involved in everything on our side.
Are you seeing livestock depredations down valley on livestock by coyotes?
Going back, going...
South?
South, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And then, I've had quite a bit of stuff over on Tin Canyon or Dewar's Place, their hyphen, which is actually elk, so we're protecting elk in here right now. They got hammered on elk calves this year, and I guess last year as well, and so we went in there and kind of clean house on that, and it's looking good right now, so. It's been kind of unusual, I'm all, I have one, after this, I'm headed over to Sid Savage's for a dead calf, so, I can't say it's coyote right now, because I haven't looked at it yet, but most likely, it's all right in that same area. The good thing down there is I don't have any restrictions, so all my tools are available, and it's pretty easy to control, so, go in there and just get rid of whoever the problem maker is, and then you should be good to go on that.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, Megan reached out to us and indicated that the collars are getting turned off at six o'clock at night?
Yes, that's right.
So, I have a question, you said that you guys are getting the reports two weeks behind, as Megan indicate, Megan and John indicated to us. I guess my thing is, if we know there's a problem, why are we turning those collars off at all?
That's...
And I know it's not...
Yeah, I know it's not, yeah, no.
I've been asking them that since we're super sorry.
No, we, I've been in your, we're all under your position, we go to these meetings with Fish and Wildlife, and the collars are automatically programmed for, they're trying to conserve battery power. They do all their, the Fish and Wildlife does all their work normally during the daylight hours, and we do ours at night, especially with the hazing and all that kind of work, or removals, and some of them, we've got to turn them back on and off. That whole project in the slash is kind of a mess right now, and it's gotten really political. This is the first wolf den that we've had on state property, so that added in a whole nother, you know, they had their own biologist, and that's a whole nother, you know, agency we had to work with on that, and theoretically, I mean, not officially on the record, they're supposed to be, we're supposed to be switching to a computer program where we'll have full access to those collars and locations, real time.
And you say wheel?
Wildlife Services, so...
So, but that does not include John and Megan, and the people who are having to deal with it?
Right, and I mean, I, I don't want to get in any personal stuff on that, but, no, you're right, you're absolutely right, it's, it's, it's hard to go there right now.
I mean, they can't go and protect if they don't know...
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, I mean, I was over there in four in one day, you know, four, just dead stuff everywhere.
I saw the visual. I was like, hey, not that guy.
It's bad, and, yeah, in fact, I was directly, I was kind of concerned about the non-lethal stuff that, because, you know, they're getting trained properly, and so I was involved in a lot of the training with our new non-lethal guide, that's why he saw me on video there, because like, we've got to go, but that was a 21-hour deal, I mean, 21-hour investigation, so it was a long day.
Yeah, that's tough, you know, that den on state lands was there last year, and they wrote a letter and asked for them to be moved, and it was denied.
Right.
So it's, it's a continuing problem.
So...
That's nothing on you, it's a situation we have with Fish and Wildlife Service.
Absolutely, so...
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, at least if you know, you can hopefully relay that pertinent information to their interests.
Oh, absolutely.
And I don't think any of us wants to see them continue to get eat up, but, you know, and, and I get it, it's the nature of the wolf, but we've got to protect them, their livelihood, their tax base, I mean, there's too much at stake here for them to have form or pay, and it's weekly.
No, absolutely, I mean, the cooperative is our priority, I mean, they're, they're paying our bills, we're corporate and funded, so, which is why they probably, I mean, we've had that kind of clash trying to get all that information, you know, but I'll keep you informed the best I can, feel free to call me anytime on any questions, or, most of cooperators have my phone number, but feel free to, you know, they have line, and Steve Gomez on the other side is the Sierra County, or the Catherine County Trapper, and moving forward.
So, no, I just wanted, let the commissioners know, there is a potential, another solution that works right now, a collar, to go on these wolves, it shocks them when they get within a certain distance of wolves. It is very preliminary, but I think it's something that could potentially work, maybe, again, I'm very optimistic about it.
Explain that again, the collar does what?
So the collar, what the collar does is, it's put on wolves, and it transmits to a near tag, so if it gets within a certain distance of a cow with a near tag, it shocks them. So the idea behind it is a scare tactic.
Right.
The little flags on the fence haven't worked for scare tactics, so we'll see, but like I discussed with Megan, you know, they're having issues on the private land, and basically they're going in and trapping, correct me if I'm wrong, right, they're going and trapping and moving them back to federal lands? Well, I think that works if a wolf knows where those boundaries are, I'd get to meet a wolf that knows I'm on private.
I mean, I've tracked wolves that left the San Mateos and went all the way to the Cook's Peak and back, I mean, that's normal, that's normal behavior. Coyotes, coyotes go a mile a season, no problem. We're working on, there's a bunch of non-lethal stuff coming down, it's all being funded on the federal side, because there's so much pressure on both sides of this, this issue, and, and some of that non-lethal we're, we're involved in, I mean, not that, it depends on, we're proving it here works, or doesn't, that's where our deal is, so, we're there, we're implementing it, you know, a lot of this stuff we did 15, 20 years ago, and we proved it didn't work once, and now we're back in the whole circle again, and I'll just have to keep you informed as it comes down, it's changing dramatically, I believe they're going to redo the entire wolf management program, that's going to change stuff, I don't know if it'll be good, bad, I'll probably start giving, I'll start doing an update on that as well, just wolf-related, because it's going to get, it's going to get really busy, and I, and I'm, it's going to come over on this side, and it's going to spill over everywhere, so...
Yeah. Yep. Other questions?
Thank you.
Ray, thank you for taking the time to come see us, I know you're a busy guy, and these mornings are pretty important, getting out and getting wind of wildlife or apps, so thank you for updating us, we'll continue to stay in touch, and rest assured, if we have a problem that comes to our attention, we'll be sure and get that to you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for your email reports all the time, I appreciate those.
Okay, county official reports, Manager Swindler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Start with the detention facility update. Today, we're, we have 32 inmates in custody, our average population for the month was 31, we had 54 arrests last month and 54 releases. Currently, we don't have any inmates that have been sentenced and waiting transport to DOC. With respect to COVID, the department is continuing to clean and sanitize all areas of the facility and the vehicles, and our in-custody programs are still suspended because of COVID and the concern of exposure to the inmates. Just finished closing out the IDP grant, and this year, we have started the RISE grant, so that's moving forward, forward starting July 1st this year. It's the same program, they just changed the name of the program. The other departments under the administration, I'd like to start off with, kudos to Serena, Serena finishes her NACO High Performance Leadership Academy this week. The course is a 12-line, a 12-week program that she's been going through, she already has a lot to do, so she's having to spend a lot of her personal time, her time at home as well, to complete these courses, and pretty excited for her, and grateful that she took the opportunity to, you know, for professional development, but kudos to Serena.
Congratulations.
Along that line, the clerk's office has an employee that's retiring the end of the month, and we have a plaque for her, unfortunately, she was not able to, to come today, but Deborah K. Turner is retiring, and the plaque is with the deepest appreciation in honor of your dedication and years of loyal service, Deborah K. Turner, a time to look back with admiration, a time to look forward with anticipation, best wishes and congratulations on your retirement, from your family at Sierra County. And it's March 27, 2006 through July 31st, 2020, so, on a personal note, it's a huge loss, it's a huge loss for the clerk's office, it's a huge loss for the county, very dedicated employee, long-term employee, and very experienced in skill with what she does, so congratulations on her retirement, and it is absolutely our loss to have her go.
I've never seen her without a smile. I've never seen her without a smile. But we do wish her her best, very best in retirement.
Well, she deserves it and congratulations to her. I appreciate you taking the time to make the comments, to reflect on our, our assessment this morning. Thank you for that. Finance completed the FY '21 budget and you will be voting on that today. The final budget is due in Saturday on July 31st or by the 31st. Finance is also working on the fourth quarter report and we have a special meeting set up for that at the end of the week to approve the fourth quarter report. That is a requirement that we get that in before the end of the month. The entire office is working again, continuing to work on the audit and getting all the documentation. It is a very long, tedious process for the staff, not only in our office, but in the treasurer's office. That they're engaged in, it's a full month of hours, you know, it's, it's at least 240 hours of time for staff members, each staff member in getting all the documents ready for the audit. We continue to promote the 2020 census. Currently, our response rate, and this is as of July 15th, is 34.6%. It's not surprising when you look at the data of the communities and the responses. The metropolitan areas have a much higher rate of response than the rural areas. And that's because the, the federal government does not send the census to PO boxes. And we have a lot of PO boxes in rural New Mexico. We're probably on track or a little ahead of prior census years at this time. However, we do need to get more and more community members respond to the census, it's very important. We completed and expensed the first grant, which was $14,819. We have the second grant and thus far we have expensed about $4,600 of that. And it's the same amount, so about $10,000 still remaining. Most of that is being used in marketing and promoting and advertisements, either through radio or through the newspaper to remind people of the significance of the census. We do have the billboards that the Commissioners are interested in having posted. One, as you come into Sierra County on, in the southern side and the northern side. Just reflecting, acknowledging that, welcome to Sierra County, home of Spaceport America. The one in Cabayo is up. The one that is going to be in the northern part of the county is scheduled to be up either today or tomorrow. So kind of excited about that. I don't know if you've had a chance to see the one on the southern part of the county. It's not the ideal location, however, it was the billboard that was available to us at the time. We're going to constantly be looking for a better location. As one becomes available, then I'll approach the Commission when that, when that happens. We had a meeting last week with Marigreen Organics as far as moving forward with the hemp manufacturing plant. They absolutely intend to do so. There's been a number of snags, holdups on the state funding and LITA funds, but they've committed to opening their store, their operation in Sierra County and in TRC. And we'll give them all the support that we can as county. Emergency management and fire, ENS, you have a attachment with the fire, state fire funds. This is the allocations that, the distributions that the county fire departments will receive. This is an increase over last year. We were a little concerned about the special assessment and the state sweeping, we're repurposing some of those dollars. That did not happen and not only did they get the amount that they were obligated, but they actually got a little bit of a, an increase in revenue for each department. So if you'll notice, those numbers continue to increase and that's because the ISO ratings are continuously improving in Sierra County. And I do attribute that to one of the volunteers, the departments wanting, you know, pursuing excellence and trying to improve. But Paul's really working with them, he has the ISO program. He understands it very well and he can help them get those, those improvements with improved ISO ratings. And that's ongoing, so congratulations to the departments, to fire administration. Thus far, you know, we've been very involved in emergency operations and providing personal protective equipment to the healthcare facilities. Thus far, we've issued out over 56,000 pieces of personal protective equipment. So over 8,900 N95s, over 11,000 procedure masks, over 7,800 gowns, over 25,000 gloves and over 2,300 face shields that we provided thus far. We are at 21 cases in Sierra County. I think that our positivity rate is 0.53, I believe, today. It's, it's our number somewhere around there. So the numbers are slowly increasing, but when you compare that to the testing that's done in the population, it's a very, very small number. Facility management has been very busy working on air conditioner leaks and issues at the fairgrounds. Also a broken water line at the fairgrounds. And a lot of weed control, as well as COVID cleaning of our buildings and common areas in our buildings. Ensure that the buildings are safe for our staff and for the public. Misdemeanor compliance program, they have 190 clients today. 57 DWI probation and 37 misdemeanor probation. Pre-trial compliance, they have 78 in drug testing the program. And, and that's in the misdemeanor compliance program. And then out of county, they are doing, they've got 18 people in the drug testing program. With respect to electronic monitoring, sub-tract, there's 16 people in the program and ankle monitors, 15 people in the program. The mental health court program, which has been very much an interest of the county in moving that forward. There have been a lot of snags with having the professionals providing the medical and behavioral health treatment of these individuals and counseling. George is pulling it all together and believes that they're kind of in the contract development stage at this point and moving forward with the program. Randall Aragon, who's been with us for close to a year, has resigned his position and on July 24th, his last day, he'll be taking a position with the school district and engaged in special ed education at that school. So he's done a fantastic job while he's been here. But certainly understand, he's, he's found a calling in education and he wants to pursue that. But he really has really helped out with training his replacement. He brought that person on board early, so there'd be some time for cross-training while he was here, so.
That was wise, it doesn't happen very often, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
I sat with Randall last night at dinner and he is so excited about some things that he wants to do with the special eds group. And he, he can hardly wait for school, he just hopes he has an opportunity to do face-to-face with his students.
Fantastic, and hopefully if he does his job well, the misdemeanor compliance program will have less people in their program, you know, in time. The probation office, the judge, they're still kind of in a holding pattern. The Supreme Court has not approved the reopening of the probate office at this point. He's expecting that at any time. However, he's continuing to work, he's continuing to, to work cases as they become, but it's just not face-to-face. It's telephone, it's emails, it's texts, et cetera. And then skirt up, last week we had a fiber optic line cut. On a bridge project that was going on in south of town. Unfortunately, this, this, the wire had been exposed for over a week and nobody had done anything about it. Well, ultimately it was cut and we lost administrative lines and 911 calls. Automatically, Michelle implemented a couple of years ago and I did not realize we would be using the system as often as we have had to use it. But all those calls are sent to Donaena County, to their dispatch center. And then through telephone, the two communicate and all calls are responded to, no calls were missed. It was really unfortunate and it lasted over 36 hours, this, this outage. And it was really a dire situation. The county, they filed a complaint with the FCC because of the slow response, lack of response. We cannot have our dispatch center go down like that. We cannot have our hospital not have lines. These are the things we just cannot have in our community. Our businesses were hurt, they couldn't process credit cards. It was, to some extent, it was a disaster and it went on way too long. Kudos to Michelle for being prepared for this and the great relationship that she has with the Donaena County Dispatch Center. And it's worked out very, very well. It's unfortunate we've had to use it as many times as we have, but we don't have a lot of redundancy with our phone lines that aren't in it.
Manager Swingle, with that being down south, whose line is that that was cut?
Well, it depends on who you ask. It's either CenturyLink or Windstream. I can't tell you the true ownership, but each one is kind of saying the other one is responsible for it. So ultimately it was fixed, but it took way too long for that to recover.
Do we have any recourse through FCC or through any leverage that we can apply to those companies to redeem their responsibilities?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I do believe that we're going to get a response from the FCC on this. This is not our first complaint with the technologies failed and the lack of response. We brought in Do-It into meetings here before, as well as with CenturyLink to come in and talk about issues in the past. I think we're going to get a pretty favorable response from the FCC.
Thank you.
Any stand for any questions?
Questions? Well, I think Mickey was really sharp in setting up the backup system and working with Mesia Valley Regional Dispatch to coordinate that. It's just, it's distressing that they have to, at times, work off of cell phones to do emergency dispatch. That's, we, we need a better, more reliable system and I don't know how we do that. But I know that you will continue to pursue options and help us there, that's pretty critical.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, do, do you have reports to share? Commissioner Wim?
I do.
Okay.
So in regards to the census money, the federal government allotted millions more and are going through an RFP process for media outlets across the nation to apply for that money. The local media has submitted their RFP to add to the local census dollars that the county and the state have been spending locally. So I await to hear my, what my award amount will be by July 30th. But we will be getting more of that census money to help promote filling out the census with Sierra County. That being said, we have received calls at the newspaper and radio station office asking where people can go to fill out the census online. And there is really nowhere, so I think that, that is a stumbling block. We need to, in the current situation, we need to figure something out. If it's a single room somewhere, we can set up appointments, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that is one of the things we are hearing from lots of people is, I didn't get a census, I live in the county, they don't have my address, where can I go? So I don't know how we can fix that in a government building. I don't know if there's a place at the Chamber of Commerce they can go, I don't know if there's, you know, one day at the library and that computer can get wiped down, I don't know what that looks like. But I think collectively, we have got to look at an option for the community members who don't have that internet access.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I might. Initially, when we started the census, the Census Bureau told us to have people, so we set up the computer labs. Unfortunately, COVID hit and that did not materialize, so I mean, we were like two days from the setting up the computer labs, I believe we had nine or 10 computer labs set up around the county. And what they told us is if you receive the card with your identification number, you just enter that information on the website and take the census and that would be your participation. Well, individuals that did not receive the card were instructed to also go on that website and fill out the census. But because they had no address, they did not register those, they did not, they did not add that data into Sierra County's database or Sierra County. So it didn't count. So right now, what they're saying is to call the 1-800 number and do the census on, over the phone and they'll work, walk you through the nine questions that are asked in the census. And it takes somewhere between three and five minutes to complete the questions. It's not a long questionnaire, it's very, very quick that you'll, you'll complete it. But it's getting that information out because it keeps changing. We told everyone to do it online, many of them did and did not get credit for it, did not get counted in, in the census. So that's the latest flyers that we're, we're distributing, is just to call that number. There's a number to call in English and a number to call in Spanish. We're the spoke numbers and that's what we're encouraging folks to do.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, I think then maybe what we need to do is update the radios box. And to that information, let's, let's push that heavily and let's get that message out. Because I know that personally, I did the census online before we got it because I have a PO box at the ranch. And so I highly doubted we were going to get one for months to come, I knew that. And then one showed up on the porch and it has the information and, you know, there, here we are. So it sounds like I need to go do it again.
Yes.
And hopefully I get counted four times instead of once, right? No, not really, just kidding. Um, okay, so if we can work on that in the coming days, I think that would be great. Another issue.
Before we go to another issue, there is an extension on, on his census, is there not?
There is, it's due October.
Due October. We really need to get that percentage up, it's so important for us, so anything that we can do. I agree that it sure would seem that we could find a spot for a computer where, you know, if you, if you went into that little computer lab over at the Senior Citizen Center, sometimes you had to wait to get in a, a slot and they have like 15 computers or something like that. Those are the only avenues those people have because they don't have internet at home and they don't have a computer at home. And, and they're still those that, you know, they're, they're set in their ways. Where some of us are beginning to find out about that and they need their way to do it. They don't want to call and be put on hold and answer somebody's questions, they want to do it themselves. So if we can work to get a, a computer that has public access, even if it's only for the census, then we should do that. But yeah, let's change our, our method of outreach so that that's highlighted big time because we've got the money for the advertising.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, in your, just in your conversation, there is a room off at the Civic Center. One of the old administration offices at the Civic Center, I think that is, just nothing is in there. There might be some equipment or something, that maybe that is a public building, one person can go in there, fill it out. Or, you know, somebody can volunteer to go and manage that for certain days or whatever. I don't know if the Census Committee could work that out, but maybe that's a locate, a public location that could have controlled access. It would be limited, it wouldn't be a big space to clean and disinfect and deal with just on the fly, if that's a thought.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, does the packet that you received on your door, did it have a personal identification number? It did?
Yes.
Yes.
Because if you don't have that, there's no sense in doing it online.
It did have a number on, on the, so I'll go fill it out again.
There you go. Continue on.
Yeah, census often, right? Okay, so on to my next issue. As you all know, I serve as the Fair Board President and we had a meeting last Monday, the Fair Board did, and we voted unanimously to carry on with our Sierra County Fair, which represents this commission and this commission. One of our state statute requirements One of our state statute requirements is to produce a fair every year, and this commission elects to have the Fair Board do that.
Good.
I have been working with Jeff Whitty, who's the Ad Secretary, Tommy Spindel of the New Mexico State Fair Livestock Show, as well as, uh, I spoke to the Lieutenant Governor last Tuesday, or last Monday after our February meeting and have sent him, uh, some follow-up emails with the information as to how we will be doing our fair, um, the CDC guidelines and the State Fair Livestock, uh, initial suggestions on how the State Fair Livestock Shows were to happen. It is my understanding in all of those conversations that the State Fair Livestock Committee put together, the outline for how those livestock shows would be ran, sent it to the Economic Recovery Committee. There was two minor changes that would allow for family members to, immediate family members to be able to watch those livestock shows, and it made it to Santa Fe and got shut down. So that's where the State Fair got shut down. And as our Fair Board all agrees, and I hope you all read in the letter that we wrote to the community on behalf of the fair, uh, it's not about carnival rides and turkey legs. It is about these kids. The Curry County Commission, the Eddie County Commission and the Lee County Commission have sent letters to the Governor requesting permission to have the fair. No surprise to us, she's not replied to any of those. It is concerning to me, uh, in my work with Jeff Whitty and the Lieutenant Governor, that she has the information on the regulations and the guidelines that could allow these livestock shows to happen, and she has not approved them. So I am a little concerned that the county sending letters requesting might get everything shut down instead of us working collectively. So I, uh, if it's okay with this commission, I would like to send the information that I sent to the Lieutenant Governor, to Bruce, and get that to the Association of Counties, to county managers across the board. So we can all, hopefully all of the commissions be working, all of the livestock and fairs and all of that be working towards the same set of guidelines. Because it is my understanding, the Economic Recovery Team did approve the guidelines that I have submitted to the Lieutenant Governor, who knew nothing about them. Um, the lady who is, uh, under, uh, the liaison between the Economic Recovery Team and the Governor for situations such as the li, the fairs, knew nothing about these guidelines. Um, so I would like to get that information to the Association of Counties and hopefully dispense all of that to everybody we can, so everyone is on the same page, so we're all asking for the same thing. Uh, one of the Curry County Commissioners was quoted in a story that says, uh, it's important that we put this agriculture is an essential business and these kids are running this as a business. That's how many of them fund their college. They've already made the investment and they need to see the results of this. This is not some fluffy show we want to go play. This is serious business. It's essential business. Without agriculture, we don't eat. It's essential these kids get to take the best market they can get. And I think that that's the way all of the commissions and the Governor's Office need to look at this, is this is an agricultural business. This is not carnival rides and turkey legs. And this is, this is how these kids are, they make their money, they pay their bills, they are taxed when they make a profit, and we guarantee that she, the government is going to want the tax money when that sale comes, but if these kids don't get to sell that, that's never going to be a realization either. So if it comes in thirty days that we do not have a resolution from the state on this, I will be bringing back, um, a letter for us, a request for us to send a letter and join the, the ignored letters campaign. But at this time, I would, I'd like the commissions, if it's okay for Bruce, to dispense that information.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, absolutely. I'm a hundred percent supportive. Kudos to the Fair Board for doing that. That was one thing I was very worried about. I understand, you know, we push back sports, but as Commissioner said, this is a business for the kids. These kids invest thousands of dollars annually in these animals. And for what, the, for the government to come in and say, you're not having your fair, sorry you spent all that money, that's just how it works, I think is very disingenuous to these kids and very unfair. So I, I definitely support your, you know, sending that to Bruce and let's let these kids have fairs. Let's let them, you know, make it worthwhile, their investment and make some money out of this. And it's not just happened, the money part of it, which you learn from 4H and FFA is, I mean, I was involved since thousand nine, and it teaches you so much to take that away from kids, even just one year is a disservice to, not just the kids, but to the community.
When I spoke to the Lieutenant Governor, he indicated that the fairs would be allowed in Phase Two. He said, if we can just get to Phase Two, we won't have this hurdle in front of us. However, I don't, we, we're going two steps back instead of forward. And it was, it was, uh, he did express his frustration and he said, I'm in Santa Fe and I'm frustrated, so I can get your frustration all the way from TRC, um, which was a little reassuring in a sense. But I did tie, uh, the educational aspect of these fairs to, to what these kids get out of it. These are life lessons they're never going to learn anywhere else. And we know education is near and dear to Lieutenant Governor's heart, so I believe we have, um, someone in our corner. We've just got to get it to that next, um, next step and get it approved. I will say that, um, Tommy Spindel's wife, Becky, she indicated that she listens to TJ Trout in Albuquerque, and he has the Lieutenant Governor on the radio show usually once a week. And when the call in, uh, whoever's calling in and complaining like, this doesn't make sense, why can restaurants be, do dine out, but breweries can't have patio stuff? And why can't nurseries be open, but Lowe's can sell flowers? But the next week, the Governor was taking care of those issues that the Lieutenant Governor was hearing about. So short of calling TJ Trout, I just went straight to Lieutenant Governor and hopefully we can get somewhere.
Well, that's a bold step, and I also endorse it heartily that we have the manager work his magic where he can. Sheriff Hamilton is our representative on, on the NMC Board, and I think this is an issue that needs to be carried to their board so that they can act as well. Sheriff, if you would do that along with the manager working, uh, to achieve that we do have a fair. It's, it's, to me, it's about so much more than the money. Of course, it's security for college funds and that sort of things, but it's about responsibility and animal husbandry and understanding the circle of life and dealing with disappointments and growing that so helps these kids prepare for adulthood that there are very few other avenues that, that have the scope and breadth of, of a 4H and FFA and county fairs. So let's do all we can to see that we have the Sierra County Fair this year.
I do believe in an agricultural exemption. There, there is a way to make this happen. And as the Fair Board President, I will be requesting use of the football field and football stadium for the livestock sale if we are not allowed to have it on the fairgrounds in a controlled environment, because then it would be in open air. There's enough room to have everybody six feet apart, have parking, have everything. Um, the Fair Board has come up with a plan to just transfer, transfer all the animals over there. So we have plans A, B, C, and D to make this happen, and the fair is ready to go forward. But I don't want anyone coming and shutting us down or a letter from the Governor saying, you will not fair, because that would be the worst thing. So, um, that's the end of my report, and thank you for your support, both of you. I felt like I had it, but I just wanted to honor the record and, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Last chair, Dave.
So, I think, Mr. Chairman, I do have a report. So Bruce mentioned in his report, um, AmeriGreens Organics coming to the community. Um, I did have a meeting with an individual by the name of Lovess Johnson III. He's the CEO of that company. And it's a company that is very committed to this community. I made a discussion with him over dinner. He absolutely wants to be here. It's not a matter of, well, this is where we, you know, we were told to come. They want to be here. And so I thank you, Bruce, for your commitment and your effort in supporting that business coming in. I will say that I'm very disappointed in the lack of the support from the city.
Absolutely.
I think the number one responsibility of any elected official is economic development. We want jobs here, good paying jobs, and we have a company that's looking at bringing fifty to a hundred good paying jobs to this community, and it's not a priority for the city.
Although they did vote unanimously to approve the lead grant.
So they did. However, however, their lack of communication and the lack of commitment from the city is what most verbally, you know, vocally sets me.
Yes.
You know, in discussion with the CEO, you have high praise for Bruce and high praise for the county because the county has stepped up and been very vocally, been very vocal in supporting them, but disappointed in the city for the lack of support. That's a problem. We, we, as elected officials, need to create jobs here. And if that's not a priority for the city, it's certainly a priority for this commission, I believe. And so I think we need to step up, if the city's not willing to, and support that company any way possible. And so I have talked to the manager about getting a resolution at one of our next meetings, just openly supporting and putting on the record of our support. Because again, if the city doesn't want to bring jobs here, the county does, and we need to step up and, and I just hope you guys have, had your support moving forward and helping that company come here.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Now, you've, uh, you've had some discussions with Fish and Wildlife Service on the wolf issue.
I, I have. I reached out to Amy Luters. And first off, I do want to commend this Luters. She did, I asked her to reach out to John and Megan personally and have a discussion with them, and she did do that, and I think that's commendable. In my experience, I'm working with regional directors and any federal agency, it doesn't happen a whole lot. And so I, I do commend her on that. I reached out to her and gave the specifics of what the Richardson's were asking for. The last I heard, she's supposed to be back me, uh, back me by the end of today, was that she talked to her staff to see the possibilities of getting those frequencies and requested information that the Richardson's wanted. She'll be able to tell by the end of today. But she is expecting our letter and looks forward to it, and we'd like to have some meetings moving forward.
I'm doing a sign here. Ray, do you have a telemetry radio and antenna to track wolves?
Yes, yes, we use both a vehicle mounted and a handheld. My experience on telemetry is it takes, I mean, you've got to put a lot of time and effort into knowing how to, I mean, you can run in and get a beep, right? So you know, there's a wolf somewhere, maybe. If you get down in a canyon, those signals bounce off of different canyons. When we're finding wolves, we usually use three guides so we can kind of triangulate and figure out where these wolves actually at. So it's, telemetry's good to a point. It's, it's pretty outdated. Uh, we need the GPS stuff. I mean, that's kind of the, the best way to do that for, especially, you know, an individual that's not doing this for a living, so.
Is, is your radio a scannable radio?
Yes.
Because the interagency field team, everything they do, they put seventy, eighty frequencies into, and anyone who picks up, they generally in a helicopter, they will grid until they find the location of the wolf. I, I know those are more expensive, but the, the systems they have right now, it's one channel at a time, and you have to click, move that channel selector and then do your scan with a handheld antenna, and it's pretty archaic.
It's very, and it, it's not fair to the cooperative to have to spend hours and hours and hours and maybe know there's a wolf in this canyon. I mean, that's how it works. A helicopter has a, I mean, running on, I mean, you're covering a lot of country real fast.
Yeah.
And you can triangulate on that wolf. I've spent, the last wolf removal I did was three weeks to figure out which wolf was what. And that was twelve, fifteen hours a day with three or four of us on the ground trying to figure it all out. So I think, I mean, I'm sure, I mean, it helps that you have a pre-programmed, you know, telemetry, but that's not, we need more.
Thank you, Ray. Yeah. Last chair, Dave, I would also suggest that you, in your visit with Regional Director Luters, suggest that scannable telemetry, along with them having the frequencies, would be a, a benefit to the livestock producer.
Absolutely. I do that.
Anything else?
That's it, no sir.
Okay. Thank you for that report, and I'm glad you're coordinating with them directly. That, uh, the commission supports that, that one voice, one face develops a relationship, and, uh, we would like to see that move forward, even though we, uh, denied signing on to the MOU, and we still are in the management representing our citizens.
I've got a really short report.
The Southwestern County Commissioner Alliance, which is Six Counties, uh, Socorro, Sierra, Catron, Grant, Hidalgo, and Luna, have a commission representative on, on the board. It was actually brought together in dealing with the, uh, the forest plan revisions for the Gila National Forest, but we have Socorro County on, and we even have a little, little chunk of the Siegala National Forest. So that's expanded and it has gone to issues, including the Central Arizona Project and the fourteen-hundred acre feet over in Catron County and the wolf. The, uh, we had a meeting here in TRC last Wednesday, and in that meeting, the Six County Commissioners represented asked that we send a letter to Fish and Wildlife Service demonstrating our support for livestock producers and, uh, and encouraging Fish and Wildlife Service to redeem their responsibilities for appropriate management of problem wolves. Bill Green, the county manager, and Catherine is our secretary. I talked to him this morning and that letter is being processed. We are going to have Nancy Pato and Stoud review it, so Attorney Pato, you'll probably see that letter in the very near future, couple of days. We want to make it a very firm, but a, a cordial letter that holds them, Fish and Wildlife Service, to account for their actions and their management. Also, we had a virtual meeting with the South Central Council of Governments. That was, uh, last Thursday. I was re-elected treasurer of that organization. They are increasing their organization on the workforce side by four positions. They increased their budget from nine-hundred thousand approximately to one-point-two million, and they have, uh, grants in place to cover those, uh, funds and, uh, associated, uh, employee cost, travel, uh, training and those sorts of things. That, uh, of the twenty-six members, I believe, there was no, nay vote on approving that budget, so that's, uh, moving forward. They're working to establish a workforce office in Las Cruces. They have one person down there, but they have temporary office, so they're going to work to get that to be a permanent fixture down there. There were several people who commented that we needed to see more activity that was directed to benefit the counties that are represented. Las Cruces is the lion's share of everything that comes out of S-Cog, and, uh, we want to see that spread to the, the little folks as well that are out in rural areas. I had a note here and I forgot, you know, this, uh, this video and audio is coming to you from our, uh, personal ownership of equipment by our Sierra County Emergency Management Officer, Paul Tugley, man of many talents, and, uh, we really appreciate you for providing this service, Paul, so thank you for that. Anything else? More reports? Okay. We'll go to, uh, Board of Finance, and I see there's no action.
No, sir.
And Old Business, we have no action there either.
No, sir.
So we're to the New Business. Item A is the Sheriff's Department Operations Discussion, and I just want to preface this with, Sheriff, we, uh, we're glad you're here with us today. We recognize you as an elected official with a very difficult job of protecting our citizens and, uh, and the law enforcement and all that goes with that. I understand that there are some things that my fellow commissioners want to discuss, and I, I don't know what they are, so, uh, I'll, which, which one of you would like to?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it's not so much time to discuss. I think the last couple of meetings, um, for all of us have been, uh, I wouldn't say that uncomfortable. I think there's been some tension. And in discussion with, um, the sheriff, and we, I said at last meeting, and I want to say it again, we're so, we're a small county. We need to ensure that we're all working together and have strong communication amongst departments. together and have strong communication amongst departments and amongst elected officials. I think that's the only way this county is successful. And so I just want to reiterate that again. I think there's huge divide in the community right now. And to be quite honest with you, it's, we need to move on as elected officials, as a community, and start looking forward. What happened in the past happened. We need to be done talking about it. We need to move on and start continuing, and continue to do good for the community. Now, I think there's, we need to, communication lines need to be opened amongst the commission and sheriff, and sheriff and the commission, admin, and sheriff and sheriff and admin. I would like to see that a little better moving forward. So it's not so much time in the discussion. I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same team, and those communications lines stay open. Sheriff, if you can keep post-communication with admin, admin, if you can keep post-communication with sheriff. And as commission, we have an open communication with the sheriff and elected officials. I think it's time that we put what happened aside as a county, and we move on and move forward. I mean, I ask that from everybody. And so that's, that's all I have to say for that. That's my TED Talk.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Lutz?
So there's a couple of times I've sat on this commission, and it's completely apparent that we don't communicate outside of our meetings, which we're not supposed to, and this is going to be one of those times, because what you have to say is completely different than what I have to say, and he had no idea what either one of us were going to say. So.
Which shows we're following the law.
Yes, we are following the rules, and those moments just made me ever so proud. Since our last meeting, I have become aware that the Sheriff's Department is handling their own personnel files, their own hiring process, their own interview process, is not making the documents they have in personnel files, are, are not supplying those documents to our HR department. We have an HR department because they are trained, they know the rules, they know the laws, they know what we can and can't do as a county. And the sheriff is an elected official, and we have other departments that are run by elected officials. And I cannot imagine if every department slash elected official was managing their own personnel files. I think that is a nightmare that leaves this county, this commission, our, all of our constituents in a huge place for liability, and I'm really not comfortable with that. So I agree with everything Vice Chair Day just said about the communication, and I think we need to resolve whatever the problem is that the sheriff's department is handling their own personnel files. Those, there should not be a personnel file for anyone at the Sheriff's Department. It should be in Serena's office, where all the HR files are, for every employee, past and current and future are. She's the one who goes to school, she's the one who takes the classes, she's the one who's responsible for the upkeep of knowing when we can fire someone, when we can't fire someone. It has come to my attention that a terminated employee had to epro their personnel file, and Serena did not have all the documents and had to get them from the Sheriff's Department. And that was, that, that should not have been. There should not be a second set of files for anyone. If there's a copy of them, I think that's sufficient, but the original document should be held by our HR manager. That's why we have them. If she's not going to have them, why do we have her? So that is, that was my request for, we need to have a discussion, and yes, we need to have better communication. I do fear that by having this communication, now every other elected official is going to be like, oh, hey, I get to keep my own files. Hopefully, none of them want that, and hopefully, they all realize Serena's the person to lean on for the process. And so, that's my two cents.
Well, that was a fairly significant two cents. Before we let the sheriff respond, last year, Dave.
So again, I think it goes back to, we need to just have some communication moving forward. I think, you know, this county is doing so many great things. We're tackling mental health. We're tackling the wolf issue. We're tackling big issues in Patrick County. But yet, the only discussions I've had over the last thirty months are, well, why does the commission fight the sheriff, and why does the sheriff fight the commission? We're not. I just want to be clear that we're, it's not a commission versus sheriff issue. We're trying to work through what happened. I, I think it's been worked through, things have been said, we're done, let's move on. Let's continue to tackle the big, actual game changers in this community that we see. And let's, that what happened in the past happened, and so I, I just, again, I think it goes back to the communication. Admin needs to talk, the sheriff, sheriff needs to talk to admin. I, I think that's a fair comment to say, it's something that I would like to see moving forward.
I concur.
Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an opportunity to rebut Commissioner Luna's information. Nothing can be farther from the truth. If Commissioner Luna and HR and the county manager would like to meet with me at my office or, or at their convenience, I would be happy to provide every one of them with the documents that I maintain at my office. I do not keep personnel files at my office. Personnel files are kept with HR. My office contains training files on these individuals, and if there are corrective memos which are issued, those are not transferred to HR, a part of their, their personnel file, because there were no personnel actions taken on those. So I'd be happy to clarify what I keep at my office, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy for the three of us to meet and make sure that the files match.
Well, I think that's an invitation, and I think that we'll accept that.
That's our opening line for communication, right?
Manager Swingle, if you will facilitate that?
Yes, sir.
I, I do think that, you know, the law enforcement situation is just a little different because you have sworn officers that have sensitive files and sensitive information. And Attorney Pato may want to reflect on that. Those things that have to do with personnel are very needed to be in the Human Resources officer's hands and kept secure. Those things that have to do with patrol activities and investigations and things that are responsibilities to reports of field training officers on cadets and those sorts of things are sensitive to the sheriff's office. And there may be some, some cloud there, so perhaps we need to seek some daylighting on some issues. Attorney Pato, can you respond and help us with that?
Mr. Chairman, of course. So our personnel policy ordinance, that was a dot buzz board, details was required to be maintained in the Human Resources Department. And included among those are the applicant's original application form, the originating personal action, showing occupation, position, classification, so forth, copies of personal action forms. But as pertains to this discussion, copies of all favorable or unfavorable letters or memorandum, such as letters or certificates of appreciation or records of other outstanding achievements for regardless of origination, as long as the procedure applicable to written records is followed. Records or certificates of educational training or orientation and achievement and completion, records of disciplinary actions, such as reprimands, suspensions, demotions, dismissals, and applications for retirement. So I mean, it's pretty extensive that everything needs to be kept here, and it's so that we can protect ourselves. As it relates to litigation, if there are complaints that come in, if there's a lawsuit filed or stuff that, that involves a particular individual employee, we want to make sure we have a full and complete record here at the administration office. But, but I look forward to the conversation with, with the manager and the sheriff to discuss what's required to be maintained here and, and to work on those issues.
Mr. Chairman, question, Dave? So the sheriff especially has some of the trainings and stuff. If we, if those training files are given to HR, is there anything wrong with the sheriff just keeping those exact training files in his possession? Is there anything wrong with that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dave, absolutely nothing wrong with them having a, a copy file or stop file, is what we call it, in, in the sheriff's department, provided that the administration has a copy of that file as well. And as it relates to training, it's so important that we have a copy of that training, because that, that is often a basis for lawsuits, that we have adequately trained or or engaged in adequate training with our officers, so we want to make sure that we have records of that training here in the administration office as well.
And then I think it just goes, you know, I, I see both sides. I understand it being in the HR, a hundred percent. But I also understand the sheriff having a copy of those trainings, so he knows and has them filed. And so I think it's smart that we have it in both, and it sounds like we need to have it in HR, and the sheriff wants it in his department, more power to him. So I think, you know, with moving forward, if sheriff has his file of trainings, just make sure whatever training files you have, HR gets them. That's, that's it. We're done.
Exactly, exactly. And Mr. Chairman, that's all I'm trying to get, is so that the files in HR are accurate and complete and, and they match. That's, we just need to have them, so when we get an epro, we're not going like, I have the application, like, what's going on, like? I, that's all. And so the sheriff opened, made the invitation. That's exactly what Commissioner Day and I were expressing we desire. We will go and fix this. This is a fixable, a fixable thing. We can go tackle the big ones.
Sheriff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dave, rest assured, everything that's in their training files is also in their HR file. As soon, as soon as I put that file together, everything is forwarded to, to HR, from their application to LEA eighty-two forms, all the way to, the only thing that's not included in there is the inventory. But rest assured, that is forwarded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that meeting happens, we can find that out, and I'm sure the sheriff can take you, you know, to word. You know, we have that meeting. If it's, the files match up, then we're fine. If they don't, that's going to match up, then we're fine.
Sheriff and Manager Swingle, would you all seek the earliest opportunity to have a meeting and include Serena as our HR officer, and if needed, Dave, Pato, so that we have things tied down and agreed upon by all the parties involved? I'm not sure that you need a commissioner in there. You can report back to us on the results. I think that would be the cleanest. And we are about working together. And, and it's a, it's a big job serving the citizen of Sierra County, that we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
And thank you for those comments, Attorney Pato. Are we, are we done with the discussion? No action taken by the commission? So we're to the infrastructure placement permit for the Garfield Water. Manager Swingle?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we received a infrastructure placement permit for Garfield Water to go in and address a water leak. The project is going to take about two days, and it's on County Road BO forty-one, Grand Perch. So it's staff's recommendation that the commission approve the permit, allow them to complete the work they need to do.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion to approve.
Commissioner Dave, seconds.
Moved in second. Row call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dave?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Infrastructure placement permit, twenty twenty zero zero two, Valor Telecommunications of Texans LLC. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We received this permit request from Valor to install twenty-five pair of copper cable. The project's going to be fairly time-consuming, about twenty-two days from beginning to end. It's County Road BO sixty-eight, Calcutta Lane, and it's staff's recommendation, the road partner's recommendation, to authorize that, that permit.
Commissioner Dave, would you approve the permit?
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved in second. Row call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dave?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Film report and request for reappointment from Jagger of Guston. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Due to the COVID pandemic, Jagger can't be here today. However, he did send a number of correspondence to the commission for review. He's requesting to be reappointed to the, to the film office as a representative for Sierra County. We have no other nominations. Nobody of interest has submitted any information to us, so you have one name.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have actually been contacted by Nani Rivera, who is interested in serving. And it is my understanding that Jagger's health is not of the utmost at this time. I believe Nani met with Jagger and tried to get to be like a volunteer under him, because he has not been able to do the Zoom calls on some of the technological challenges we are all struggling with, Jagger is not immune to, so, or immune from. So she had indicated she would like to serve under Jagger and kind of work with him. However, Jagger has been there for twenty-seven years, and sometimes we don't want to let go of things we love and have put our heart and souls into. As a mediation solution, I would like to propose that we create a film advisory board, so we can have a multitude of individuals working on this. I think Jagger brings a lot of the historical, there's somebody who owns that blue truck or has a Dalmatian in TRC. He has those contacts where, but I do not believe that putting more people to this would not be a greater solution and a greater benefit for Sierra County collectively. Nani was actually, is a part-time resident of Sierra County, has property here, and was John Hendry, the New Mexico Film Union President's number-two person. And so she has a great vast amount of contacts within the film industry. So I would like to see if we can put the, a resolution together, creating that advisory board for our next meeting's agenda, and definitely include Jagger on that board. But let's see if we can get some more individuals interested and get as much response as we can for Sierra County.
Mr. Chairman, is the motion table?
So moved.
Commissioner Dave, seconds.
Moved in second to table and seek a resolution to, and create, create a, what would you call that board?
Film advisory board.
Film advisory board. So, row call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dave?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a request for exemption from direct deposit by Sheriff Hamilton?
Mr. Chairman, we skipped the form. I am he.
Oh, we did. Do we need to approve the form?
Correct.
Okay, so there's a direct deposit exemption request form. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the form.
Commissioner Dave, seconds.
Moved in second. Row call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dave?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes. And, Mr. Chairman, as you go to the item F regarding the sheriff's request, I do, Ms. Nicole's letter for public comment did bring some things to mind. Do you feel that it's appropriate that we move that to executive session personnel and then come out of there and take that action?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna, I, in the time since you read that letter, I, I shared the same concern. So I went to the opening ex-advocate compliance guide to see whether or not a discussion of that would be appropriate in executive session under personnel. And it does not appear, it does not appear that it would be. The discussion in executive session for personnel is limited to qualifications and those sorts of things. It's not, it's not, it doesn't encompass this sort of request, so I do not believe a discussion of exemption would be appropriate for discussion.
Then I won't make my motion to move to executive session.
Well, it's a fairly simple request, and we are to item F, request for exemption from the direct deposit by Sheriff Hamilton. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the exemption for discussion purposes.
So there's a motion?
And a second for discussion? Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I understand we, we just approved the exemption request form. And I see on this that we did approve, you know, there's three reasons why we would exempt an individual from this, the person being that they don't receive one or two paychecks. They're unable to obtain a checking or savings account. And then special circumstances must be significant, not due to the lack of a bank account. In all fairness, reading the sheriff's letter, he does have a bank account, and that's not the reason he's wanting exemption. It's strictly due to. It's strictly due to, yes, issue with security. So I think in all fairness, the way their exemption form reads, that's his reason for wanting exemption. I think it's fair. But I'm interested to hear what the commissioners have to say. Based on what we just passed, I think, it's not that he doesn't want a bank account. It clearly says in this letter he has a savings account. It's the issue with security.
Mr. Chairman, if I might also speak to that. So any organs that this board adopted at the last commission meeting, it provides the board can, commissioners may grant such an exemption by resolution and only for a good cause. So again, that's, that's the legal standard, is the good cause. So I mean, you guys, the board decides what constitutes good cause for the purposes of our organs.
Commissioner Luna, any thoughts?
I have lots of thoughts. In the second paragraph of the sheriff's letter requesting exemption, he says, they share the account, he and his wife share the account, and the new requirement will, are limited, they are limited to a set number of transactions. The new requirement will create an undue hardship on his ability to access funds within that account. And he will be forced to consider opening a debit or checking account. Then he goes on to the threat of breach of personal information and cyber hacking and on and on. I, we are all prone to it in this day and age. I don't feel that not getting a paper check makes him less apt to it. I don't think getting direct deposit makes him more prone to it. My bank account has never been hacked through my direct deposit from the county, from my business, from my husband's paycheck, or anywhere other. It has been, my, my account and my identity has been used through bank cards, through purchasing makeup at Dillard's once, and through people accessing my emails. So I just don't feel that this payroll deposit is the way that he's going to get breached. I do think he brings out a completely valid point that maybe we offer a fraud protection service to all of our employees. And I think that that's a great idea, that we can look into possibly offering all of our employees a group discount into such a service if they would like to buy into that. But I don't think that's, everybody's afraid of getting hacked. Everyone's afraid of their ID getting stolen. So if we make that the go-to exception, then everybody's going to be using it who wants to get a paper check still. I think we are setting ourselves up to still be cutting tons of paper checks.
Well, we do so now for vendors, you know, very few vendors are doing direct deposit. Most of those are paper checks that we process.
The process of the hard checks are for backup purposes. Most of those are done via ACH transmission.
They are?
Yeah.
We sign them to have a record?
Yes, sir. I have a request to the board.
Do we have any direct costs on what the security, the cyber fraud protection would cost, just off the top of the head?
I could, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Day, I could work with IT to see, but just off the top of my head, I have no idea. I would have to certainly work with our, our IT department to see what something like that would cost.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think that's important to note that the banks are required to have that fraud protection plan in place. So if they're breached, they're required to notify you. You can have credit checks, you can get, there are a number of elements to the federal law requirements. You're just, you'd be implementing something that already exists. Now, if anybody's identity is stolen, that's a whole separate matter. It deals with that credit card or however that was taken. But if we're talking about direct deposit into a bank, it's the bank's responsibility to have a fraud protection plan for every customer they have at that bank.
That's a good point.
It's federal law.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we decline the exemption request.
There is a motion? Is there a second? Hearing none, motion dies for lack of second. Is there a motion for the request for exemption?
Mr. Chairman, I think I made the motion right from the beginning.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It was seconded for discussion.
So then, Mr. Chairman, I'll draw my second.
Okay.
Thank you.
That works.
Thank you.
I will second the motion and we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
No.
Motion is approved. Exemption is granted. New Mexico Geographic Names Committee, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we received a correspondence from the New Mexico Geographic Names Committee concerning changing the official name of the Rincon Valley to Hatch Valley. You all have a copy of the correspondence. Hatch is trying to designate a specific area. And this is for the purposes of federal maps. This is the name that would show up on federal maps, whether it be Rincon Valley, Hatch Valley. I think the individual from Hatch is trying to designate what the boundaries are for Hatch. Hatch chili, anything outside of that would not be deemed Hatch chili. Folks that are outside that area are saying that's exactly what would happen. And we have the same soil, we have the same product, we're growing the same chili, but it's not in the Hatch Valley, so we can't call it Hatch chili. So I'll leave that to the commissioners to discuss.
They're growing lots of chili everywhere now. Olatha, Colorado, south of Grand Junction, has become a major chili producer with their soils. And that's on the Gunson River. It's, it's pretty interesting. You know, you, you go to several restaurants out of state and they advertise Hatch chilies. That's interesting. I wonder if they come from Hatch, some of them are padling that you would put in a baby's bottle. But that's neither here nor there. Any, any thoughts, fellow commissioners?
So I'll go on this one. So I, I have some history with this, actually. You know, I have close ties to the Hatch Valley. This has been a discussion, it's been in the works for quite a while.
Many years.
Many years. But more recently, I think outside companies are seeing just a branding value of Hatch chili. I mean, Hatch is the chili capital of the world. And so outside companies, and not just outside of the Hatch Valley here in Mexico, around the country, people are branding chilies Hatch Valley just because they make money.
Yep.
I think it's a disservice to our farmers. You know, simply what this letter, what they're asking for is that we support it or we don't support the name change. And the, with the New Mexico Geographic Names Committee, it's, you know, in a sense, it's not their intent of influencing commercial or intellectual property. But I feel it is our, you know, responsibility and interest if we can help our farmers out. Again, I just, it goes back to the misbranding of products that are not grown in the Hatch Valley. So I'll make the motion that we advise staff to send me a letter of support for the name change.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Manager Swingle, please get that letter.
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Stahlberg. Letter to Fish and Wildlife Service on wolf correspondence at the request of Johnny and Megan Richardson at the Slash Ranch, who also own a farm at Monticello, I believe. And, you know, Beaverhead is just west of our county line, and the Slash Ranch is just outside of the county. But Johnny and Megan Richardson are a fixture in Sierra County and in TRC. So I think that we can sure entertain this letter. I made some revisions in just some wording. Thank you, Manager Swingle, for drafting this. My changes were to make it read a little bit more pointed to Fish and Wildlife Service so that they understand what we're talking about. It also included that they needed access to the GPS site on a daily basis, and that they needed the frequencies of all the wolves on this side of New Mexico so that they could scan for them as well. This letter does not have that they need scanning, radio telemetry and antenna equipment, but it should. And it also does say that we want them to leave the collars on. You know, those are about $8,000 collars. And they last for 18 months. And they jettison with a little charge when they go out. The interagency filtering, when they get close to, they actually try to trap those coyotes, those coyotes, those wolves, and replace their collars. And they're doing some of that now. I think the thrust of the letter is that Fish and Wildlife Service is not working with the local rancher and many others who are suffering economic losses. And Megan was telling me that the last inspection, they had to preserve the scene as a crime scene, and they had to preserve the carcass. And it caused them significant problems in altering their daily schedule until an investigator got there. That's just a huge imposition on the livestock producer. So I hope you've had a chance to read the revised letter. Do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion, we approve sending the letter.
Commissioner Day seconds.
Moved in seconded, all in favor? Roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We'll get that to them. Uponment of protest board members, Tom Pestak and Gary Schenagel for the assessor's office, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we received this request from the assessor to ensure that he has a protest board. He's recommending Tom Pestak and Gary Schenagel.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion, we approve the two guys requested by the assessor.
Commissioner Day seconds.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
We'll go to contracts, agreements and procurement, the professional service agreement with SmithCo. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This was on the agenda for the last meeting. It was tabled. We did receive one month of GRTs, the month of April's, and we did experience about a $10,000 increase in revenues for the month. As far as the procurement itself, I'll refer to the chief procurement officer.
Good morning, Jocelyn. Hello, Commissioners. So basically, it's round two. I don't know if you are okay with the numbers or if you want, but if we don't move forward, then it's going to be a mess, plain and simple. So I'm just waiting to see if you guys are all comfortable with moving forward or we just scrap this whole procurement. And that's the truth of it, because it's going to expire.
Yeah, it's going to expire. We would have to go out for a new bid. Is that correct?
And everybody's already aware of all the leads and the cost and where the county stands, so that we don't have the upper hand anymore.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll say something. So, you know, I know last meeting we were worried about bill coming in, issues with that GRT. Looking at what GRT came in at April, and with the bill coming in a little higher than what was expected, I feel comfortable this much. So I made the motion to approve the professional service agreement with SmithCo.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved in seconded, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
So we're going to be rebuilding a building and are renovating a building and moving the county offices in the near future.
Mr. Chairman, we'll likely not be on this commission when the project is done, but I will be sure to be there.
Will go to the party.
I will be so happy to celebrate the moving of that. I'll help pack boxes. So, yeah.
It'll be a good day.
Yeah, I hear she's very eager. So thank you for all of your work on this, Jocelyn.
You too.
You've done above and beyond. Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for that. And it is, it is a good contract to look forward to working with SmithCo.
I think it's going to be a good project. It'll be a big one. It'll be good.
We'll go to the service agreement with the County of Sierra and Olive Tree on the behavioral health grant. Manager Swingle and Jocelyn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have for you is the agreement between Sierra County and Olive Tree to manage the behavioral health investment zone grant. Core scope of duties in this is the target population for the provider, individuals who are non-medicate and are required to seek behavioral health or mental health treatment, substance abuse disorder, and suicide prevention services in Sierra County. Examples of the treatment services included, but are not limited to, crisis counseling, cognitive-based treatment, educational training, outreach and telehealth. This is going to fill a very big void in Sierra County. I'll defer to this chief procurement officer.
So last year, Bruce signed the falling colors agreement. It doesn't really have a cost associated with it. It's basically the reporting that like Virginia and the Olive Tree have to oversee to ensure that the funding is being allocated properly. And it's an agreement that, that they need to have in place in order to move forward with that kind of reporting. It's very simple, really.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion, we approve.
Commissioner Day seconds.
Moved in seconded, roll call, please.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll get that agreement to them.
Thank you.
Purchase of service agreement between County of Sierra Sheriff's Office and the TRC Municipal Schools.
So this has been the ongoing agreement for one of the sheriff's officers to be on site. And I just saw where our attorney had some issues with it. So I want to resort to Dave before we approve this agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have issues as much as questions. It seems like this position, it says that it's not less than one full-time position, but then elsewhere in the agreement, it says one and a half times. Also, the consideration of $50,000 a year per LPSG, and I just want to confirm that that means $75,000 we're going to pay for one and a half times. And then also it provides for 20, for overtime being compensated at $25 an hour. And I have concerns in light of our obligation under the agreement to provide not only the LPS, the licensed private security guard, but also the patrol vehicle, the maintenance patrol vehicle, fuel, oil, replacement tires, other expenses associated with the vehicle, insurance, provision, provision of standard firearm rounds of ammunition, that $25 an hour might not be sufficient to cover the full cost of overtime for one of these individuals. So I just kind of wanted to have this board fully aware whether or not it's subsidizing the program. They sent it, which is subsidizing it, and whether or not it's comfortable doing that.
Sheriff, do you have the ability to respond from the drafting of the agreement, the discussion with the school board?
Mr. Chairman, this is the, this is the same agreement that we've had in place for the third year now. The deputy that I do have in place, with his current salary, it does cover the expenses. The one-half position was essentially agreed to as it's essentially the rest of the department or as called. For instance, if I had a full-time SRO that was stationed at the high school, and we had a a situation down in Array, rather than pulling him away from the high school, if I had a deputy that was on patrol down there, that's the point-five officer that we had negotiated. Is it anybody that was essentially on patrol that we were already, already using in the capacity of patrol would basically double as that point-five officer. We've not had, we've not had budgetary shortfalls as a result of this. We were actually going to negotiate a $10,000 increase in the, in the contract this year, but due to the uncertainty of budgets, we decided to go ahead and defer this for another year before we, before we renegotiate budget increases.
So it is $50,000 in total for the, the entire program supported by the sheriff's office?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know this all that under duty hours, it makes clear that we are obligated to provide a minimum of 60 hours a week. So I mean, it does make clear that we are part five, one and a half employees under this commission.
No.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also I think, and I think this is indicative of the discussion you had earlier. We don't see this contract, saw this contract when it was going on the agenda. Our process is it goes to procurement and it goes to the county attorney in advance to review the contract, make whatever adjustments need to be made, changes to the contract. There's language in here that the county is going to indemnify and hold the school partners. Our insurance county, insurance company will not allow us to do that. Those are types of things that legal should have an opportunity to review and identify in advance, but they've had a very narrow window to review this contract prior to this commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Sheriff, you're saying there were absolutely no changes to this from the ones we have approved previously?
Mr. Chairman, the only changes were that the language in the old one, in the previous two contracts indicated that their true to consequences municipal school district was seeking, seeking SRO or L, L license?
LPSG.
LPSG. They took that language out and essentially the rest of the document stayed the same.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
In light of our attorney's concerns, whether they be, be the same or new or whatever, I'm not, especially to the not holding the school liable, I have a concern approving that, knowing that. So I would make a motion, we table this and let our lawyer and the school's lawyer work out those details and come back. And if we need to have a special meeting to approve it before, hopefully if school starts on time, then let's do that. We might not need an SRO before school starts. I mean, that might not be a problem.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think that if you're comfortable with the hours that, and the sheriff is comfortable with the hours, knowing that it's 60 hours a week, if we eliminate that paragraph or verbiage in that paragraph, that you can approve it. I don't know if it's time sensitive or not, Sheriff, but if they eliminate that paragraph, then we could go ahead and at least sign it on our end and see if the schools will go forward with it.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm going to propose then is that you delegate to the management authority to execute the contract once they remove the indemnification.
Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw my motion. However, I have further discussion. So we have the, the 60 hours and then the overtime at 25 hours. Have we ever billed the school for any of that overtime?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna, yes. We build, we build a school for anything over 40 hours for the, for the full-time position.
Okay, but the contract, so that's, thank you. The contract says 60 hours, so do we need to also modify the 60 hour to 40 hour if we're billing them for anything after 40?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna, the only, the additional 20 hours that come in are essentially the times that my deputies are either in the Array school zone or they're at the elementary school that are already on shift and are essentially putting in that time. We're technically not billing them or we're filling out a time sheet for that point-five, but we're putting in those hours in the, in before and after school while the buses are running in the school zones with the deputies that I have on duty. Technically, the only thing that they're being billed for each month, they're, they're being billed $12,500 every quarter for, for the, just the basic services of the full-time officer. And there are times where they may have a basketball game, a volleyball game or a football game where they require additional security. There have been times where I've had up to four deputies that are, are pulling off of that overtime that we billed the school for.
So, Mr. Chairman, so it's essentially the overtime's sort of just the county's contribution matched. Because you're, you're billing monthly for $50,000, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Day, we are billing $50,000 annually, but the school is paying in addition $25 an hour for every deputy that pulls overtime.
Okay. So, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So you have a, say the SROs at the high school and we have an issue down at the Array school. You have a deputy there in the Array area that you, you know, you send over to the school to deal with the issue. So at what point is that individual's, that deputy's time charged from the moment the call goes out or, do you understand my question? I guess, how's it managed?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Day, we are not charging for that, that additional deputy's time.
That's a part of the point.
That's part, basically, the county's in-kind contribution to the program. The only thing that we are billing are the, are the, the one full-time officer, the full-time school resource officer, $12,500 every quarter for a total of $50,000. And then the school is paying any additional overtime for the rest of the deputies.
So then should the, should the agreement reflect 40 hours for the school resource officer and overtime for deputies for special events or as required? And then some way to say that deputies on duty will respond to Array and the elementary school and other places as needed? Can we do, can we do that and make that change in the agreement? The 60 hours is troublesome for a deputy that's overtime required for the school resource officer. And I understand that half position, but your, your officers are recording that in a, in a unit log and their activity at either Array or the elementary school, but you're charging overtime for when they are present at special activities such as football games and those kinds of things. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I think that just modifying, like you suggested, would clear this up because if somebody looked at the bill for those overtime and it equated 20 hours and the guy, and our SRO is at 40, then that is the 60 for the contract. And why is the school paying overtime for 20 hours when the contract says 60? Because they're not privy to this conversation. I just think that clears up the contract a little bit. And then my third question to that is, is $25 an hour cover the cost of overtime for those deputies? I don't believe it does. If our certified deputies are at a minimum making 17 whatever an hour, that does not cover the cost of overtime. So does this commission want to donate that time to the community, to the schools, or should we come to a better, more number? I was going to use some fancy word.
Well, 17 and a half would be 8.50, so that's 25.50. That, that would cover the cost of the deputies assigned to the special event.
However, that's, that's the new guy just out. That's if Lieutenant Baker is going, that does not cover the cost.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you're looking at also a 34% benefit load on top of that, equipment, vehicle, fuel, insurance. Yeah, I mean, when you factor all that in. How many hours a year, a school year of overtime are we typically submitting for? The $25,000?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would have to, I would have to pull up our, our actual invoices there. I would say on average, we're probably during the football season and basketball season where they're requesting the majority of the, of the overtime hours there, I would say it averages anywhere from $1,200 to $1,500 a quarter.
Mr. Chairman?
If we accept the $50,000 as an appropriate compensation for this position for a full-time position, that brings that to 24.03 an hour for the deputy. And so the overtime, if you, based on that, that'd be 36.05 an hour. So if we determine that $50,000 was an adequate base pay for this position, then 36.05 would be an adequate overtime compensation for the position as well. Do you follow my tramp up?
I do.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We authorize the manager to fix the contract with our notes and requests, address the liability issue and move on.
And submit it to the schools? Thank you.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded. Roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, not free asking her. I want to make sure we captured all of the commission's proposed revisions. So number one, we have that reduction of 40 hours from 60. We have the removal of the indemnification provision on, in section five, page two. Then we have the increase of the overtime compensation of $36.05. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, Mr. Chairman, I really liked the way you said the special events.
Yeah, it is special events. And, and then if there's a, a call during duty hours at a place where the school resource officer is not the closest resources, we respond and I, I think the thing that the sheriff has done in getting this contract for the county has demonstrated availability of resources to respond to the need. And I think that's why they have continued to come to Sierra County for the assistance in the school resource officer position.
And our students don't just live inside the city limits.
That's right.
And so he's able to cover the Array as well as the kids who live in Winston when there's a truancy issue or whatever. It's a great, it's a great deal. We just need to work out the bugs on it.
And in, in the event that there's an emergency, all law enforcement resources will respond in kind immediately.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, when this was originally awarded to us, I know the previous chairman, Mr. Lyon, had, this was not going to compensate the, the county totally for, for the services that we were, we were providing. And it was the, it was the opinion of this board at that time that this was essentially what the county would have to pick up on the, on the back end of it there, which was very minimal, would basically be the county's contribution to it there. Again, you know, our, our, our schools operate with a limited budget, just like the county does. I can tell you that in the two years that we've had this contract, again, this has not proved to be a, a financial hardship on the, on the sheriff's office. It's actually proved to be quite a benefit for us when it comes to manpower and resources. We've actually been able to use our, our school resource officer since March, since school was out in the capacity of handling calls in the county and assisting with some of the manpower shortages that we've experienced here in the, in just the recent past. So, I mean, again, it's been a benefit to Sierra County, but on the other hand, I believe it was the, the previous commission's take on this that this was, the reason that it didn't compensate the, this didn't pay for the whole program was essentially that that was, that was going to be the county's end of it there, so.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to add that when this contract was initiated, it was for the safety of the students as well. It wasn't because of the funding. That was when there was a shooting and that's why they implemented, to have the protection for the children. So that's one to, to consider when it comes to this agreement as well.
And, Mr. Chairman, we had even offered to help pay to build a fence at the time.
Right.
And this was the best agreement that we could do, that what the school was willing to do. But I think as we increase our, our pay to the deputies and we increase our requirements for our other employees, we have to also continue to reevaluate these contracts and bring them up to times too. I, I mean, I'm glad that we're able to use him across the board, but I think the liability issue was the A number one thing. I'm glad Bruce brought up because we cannot have that. So I'm glad we're, we're able to fix this and build.
Okay.
Thank you.
No further comments. We'll move on. Purchase of defibrillator for Hillsboro Volunteer Fire Department. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Hillsboro's requested a fairly robust defibrillator in using state fire funds. The Fire Marshal's Office has denied the request. The Fire Marshal's Office has a list of things that you can purchase in a fire department. If it's not in that list of things, they need to approve the expenditure. The Fire Marshal's Office position is that they need to conduct an inspection of the department to ensure that their firefighting needs are being met first before they allow this money to be spent on a defibrillator for, for their ambulance. An N P A requires that the fire apparatus have a, a basic A E D on their water tenders and on their structural engines. Other than that, they're not required to have any. The cost of this defibrillator is over $30,000 and it's significantly more when you have all the add-ons that they would like to include on that request. We can buy a defibrillator for about $1,500 for any of the government buildings. I don't know if Chief Dooley has any comments he would like to make on it, but at this point, it's been denied. So it's, I guess, an item we should table until either the inspection occurs or they reduce the scale of the type of defibrillator that, that they're requesting.
Chief Dooley, you have comments?
No, I'll be meeting with them. I've already called Mary Westland up there. So we're going to go after a little bit different game plan. We're going to see where, we need to get that inspection done from State Fire and then we'll, we'll proceed as to which direction we want to go. I think they were interested in this because they were going to get a zero interest from Zoll, from the company to get it done. However, with State Fire not allowing that at this time without the inspection, we're going to, we'll just have to work through it and see what else we can come up with.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Zero percentage interest is great for $30,000 of that money. So Commissioner Day moves to table.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Moved in seconded. Roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
But it's Bluetooth cable.
Yeah.
It does look fancy.
All right, we'll move to resolutions, ordinances and proclamations. Resolution 109-005, approving participation in the program of the South Central Council of Governments and Appointing Members. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an annual resolution that the commission entertains of whether you want to participate with the COG or not. We have historically been a member of COG. Again, the cost is $1,219.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion, we continue our membership and that Vice Chair Day and yourself serve as the members.
Okay. I will second that.
Moved in seconded. All in favor? Roll call.
May I? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Who will be the primary and then the alternate? That's the only question I have.
Okay. So they continue to be the way it is, right?
Yeah. And I am the serving treasurer right now, so.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for pushing the issue and give a little more assistance to the smaller counties. Appreciate it.
We'll stay in touch with them and see how that works. So we have a motion and a second. A roll call.
Commissioner Paxson?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Resolution 109-006, the final budget. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is the resolution to approve the final budget. It is due in Santa Fe on It is due in Santa Fe on July thirty-first. It was emailed out to you, or a copy was provided to you so that you had a chance to review it, spend some time with the document. Commissioner Day had some very minor changes that we made with some of the expenses that were consistent with the workshop that, with, the budget actually was inconsistent with a couple of line items. And we corrected that to what we discussed in our workshop.
No significant changes in those corrections?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it is just a couple of specific line items. But we had changed, zeroed out, that hadn't been changed. It's just my mistake. So, Mr. Chairman, we approve the resolution, approve the budget.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Budget is approved.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would like to recognize Becky Mina for her efforts. This is a particularly difficult budget. No budget's easy. This is particularly difficult, particularly difficult when you don't have the opportunity to sit down with the departments and go through a budget process because of COVID. It really was a challenge for her. She did a fantastic job and I'm, I'm just quite proud of how she, how she worked this budget.
And cut a million dollars out, so.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to commend all of our department heads and elected officials. They all went to the cutting board with us and some of them took bigger cuts than others. And I, I heard there was a prize for he who got cut the most. Virginia won that and Billy Neely was very upset. He was taking pride in having taken the biggest hit. But everybody went to the, went to bat with us to be able to cut and to make it possible and, and to help the purchase or the construction of the new building actually happen. And so I want to personally thank everybody for, for what they did to help us make that possible.
Mr. Chairman, I want to reiterate that. I don't think this commission found any happiness in cutting those budgets. And, you know, our department heads, they understood that we had to do it. It wasn't nothing personal. We were on the tight budget. So, you know, I want to reiterate that and say thank you to our department heads. We always talk about being fiscally responsible and it's not just this commission. It triples down all the way to our department heads and our employees. Thank you to all our department heads.
I'm going to echo both the commissioners in that. Manager Swingle, please convey our appreciations to all departments, you know. But we salvaged our critical structure and didn't lay anybody off in cutting a million dollars out. But they're going to be driving vehicles and scrapping on paper and PNs and paper clips and doing things that they extended a tremendous amount of willingness and responsibility. It's very much appreciated. Resolution one oh nine zero zero seven for the local government road fund program and match waiver administered by NMDOT for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the next three resolutions are the three road projects that the county gets from state DOT. This first one is a capital project. It's for Purcell Road or VO forty-five. The total expense of the, the project is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. The DOT's contribution to that is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, five forty-eight. The county's contribution is twenty-five percent, forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. We have submitted, this is a request for a hardship waiver to eliminate the twenty-five percent match that the county has to provide. What we do provide is in kind and we're not talking about dollars that we're sending. It's in-kind services, so it's indirectly affecting the road department's budget. It's staff's recommendation, the road department's recommendation to approve resolution one oh nine dash zero zero seven.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Day moves to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, roll call please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, can we go ahead and approve one oh eight, uh, one oh nine dash zero zero eight and zero zero nine? There's a similar request for different roads. I'll make a motion to be approved.
I second that.
Is that consistent, Attorney Pato?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We can do that, okay. Motion and a second for one oh nine zero zero eight and one oh nine zero zero nine to be approved. All in favor, roll call.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Resolution one zero nine zero one zero for establishing protocol for public hearings. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This file was placed on the agenda at the request of a, of a commissioner. We have a, a resolution dealing with county commission meetings and public comment and in input in meetings. We do not have a policy, we did not have a policy or protocol in place for public hearings. So this document is that document.
So, Mr. Chairman, on, on that, thank you for... Yeah, I looked at your last meeting, after the public hearing. We hadn't realized we don't have any, you know, protocol for how we do public hearings. You know, there's overall what we all think of when we hear public hearings. But it's always nice to have how that works in writing. And so I think the document that staff lined out is very good. I think it's a document that we approve annually, not just for, you know, this commission but moving forward for future commissions. I think it's a long-term deal. It's just a protocol, we pass it and, and just state how public hearings are, how they work for the county. We do have one for public participation. I think one thing we see in a lot of things is some personal attacks on character. And I think moving forward, we need to get that limited and shut that down. There's, you can argue with the commission, fight with the commissioner, any elected official on, you know, a policy we take and standards we take. But I think when it attacks personal character, I think it needs to be limited and cut off. So again, I encourage fellow commissioners to approve the resolution and that would be established protocol moving forward. And I'll move to approve the resolution.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
Moved in seconded, roll call, Chairman.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to sections ten fifteen E through H to discuss pending and threatened litigation personnel and real estate as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, to go into executive session, roll call please.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
We will return.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll come back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter back an open session and certify that no action was taken and only matters as this on the agenda we're discussing.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, I second.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Paxton?